eleven will come. Is that, what is that?
Wait.
It just lets you know it's recording.
Yeah, okay, so the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, August 11 will come to order. Roll call, please.
Sure, Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Present here.
Mr. Mysak.
Here.
Ms. Shockley.
Here.
Mr. Baxendale.
Here.
And Mr. Meglio.
Yeah.
Right, you have a quorum.
Okay. I want you guys to know, I can see four of you, well, three of you, myself and three of you now. I figured out how to do multiple faces.
All right, I can't figure out how to get mine on there today. Something.
I looked it up and you got a swipe left. It's got a thing over there. Should have done that earlier. Anyway. Okay, so the first on the agenda is the referral from the Public Works. 440 Newtown Avenue, 78 Primary Road. Extension of private sanitary sewer for approved conservation development. What do we have?
Um, good evening, Vanessa Valada is from engineer here. And I'll be able to present to you the item. And I believe also attorney research is also in the call if you guys have further questions. I apologize, but I'm not going to be able to have my camera on today.
Well, Vanessa, just say you can give us, I think we all read the material, give us a summary. And then we'll see if we have any questions.
Sounds good. So first, I would like to start explaining why you guys are seeing this now. GPW in conjunction with WPCA. Last month, we finished like a policy on what will need to be done when an applicant will come for a sewer extension, either private or public. This one that you see in front of you will be, will remain private. So in other words, they're gonna still maintain, install and maintain, and the city will now gonna take ownership after it. But in the future, you're gonna start seeing some that will become public after it gets installed and we inspect and we approve. So we, so again, we went through a whole policy that is in our website. And usually, we're gonna, the first step is to get WPCA and GPW approval, staff approval, if it becomes public, has to go for a public hearing to get WPCA board approval. Then comes to GPW committee, then gets referral for A24 and finally common council. So that's why you guys are gonna be seeing some of them. So this development is only for few houses. And they're gonna keep it private and they're gonna connect to another private sewer that it's already in place. This project has already been approved a couple of years ago. Even GPW and WPCA and conservation already approved everything. The only piece that was missing was really the portion for the extension of the private sewer.
Vanessa, let me, what is, I heard what you said, but I'm not sure I know what it all means. So when you say it's gonna be kept private, what is the city's responsibility here? What's the city doing?
We do not have any responsibility over the line that is being proposed. So if there is any damage maintenance, we don't need to do anything of on that line. The only part that, why does it come in front of the A24 is that the flow that is being generated from this extension will end up in our system. So in other words, we are adding more capacity, right, to the line that is already there. And that's why it's A24 referral is required. But we're not gonna maintain that. So if three years from now, the pipe has a leakage to be replaced, it will be the association that will be doing it. So we have a couple of private sewers in town. So this will be just one more of them. There will be times that you're gonna see as a public one. I believe probably next month or the month after, you guys gonna see a couple coming in. The public will be a different story is that the developer or the applicant will be installing the whole system, but then they want us to take ownership after. And some of the areas, we prefer to do that because it can be sometimes a bigger area or sometimes we know that if that system has some kind of a trouble, we wanna be able to get there and repair and do not have to ask someone to do that kind of work. But this one is only private and we don't have to do anything in the future.
Vanessa, if I may, the real point is that you've now approved as a city that they can take the flow of water. And the flow of water is not, is totally consistent with what you can handle at the city level. And the private sewer remains private. That's the key thing, and that's why it's on our desk today.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or any other commissioners? Okay, so let's see if I have, well, I do have a resolution here to, if there are no other questions from anybody. I propose the resolution to approve as it's written here. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any oppositions, abstentions? Okay, we're forward. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the 25 Van Zandt Street condominiums building zone text amendment to create a vocational trade workforce training center school.
Fran, one second, I'm so sorry. There's feedback. And I'm wondering if it's Brian Baxendale causing it because his microphone is on. I don't know who else to blame because you're the only ones microphone is still on, so. But there's feedback coming through and you're sounding a little garbled.
Mike, I will take your guidance and.
Okay, hopefully it's not me. I have a fan going. I wonder if that's the feedback. Anyway, okay, so we're moving on to 25 Van Zandt Street. Who's here to discuss?
Hey, Madam Chairman, my name's Hiram Peck. And I'm here representing the owner of 25 Van Zandt this evening. And I'd be glad to give you a short presentation of what we have proposed and answer any questions that you may have.
Oh, excuse me, one second. Brian, this came before us from what we read here. Couple of years ago, then it was withdrawn. Is that my understanding?
Correct. So the applicant's been working on getting additional materials. So this is kind of their 2.0 version of their submit.
Okay, so is it anything like, well, I read, I read everything. Go ahead, mister. I can't see you. So I don't know if you're on video or just on phone.
Yep, I'm here, Madam Chairman, and I can see everyone, so I'm hopeful that you can hear me.
Okay, can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, you've probably received the package of information that we submitted with regard to this zoning amendment. What we have is an existing site of about 4.78 acres at 25 Van Zandt Street, an existing building which has been in existence since 1923. Many, many years ago at its inception, it was a hat factory, actually.
You don't need to, you don't have to get back to 19, whatever it was. Get us, you know, where we are. We heard it last time, no offense. So just get us to what's going on now.
Okay, so what we proposed is an amendment to the regulations in two places. One is a definition section with regard to a vocational trade or workforce training center. And the other section of the regulations, Article 70. This is again a zoning regulation that is an amendment to the use in the industrial one zone. In addition to that, Madam Chairman, the staff has recommended and suggested, and we're perfectly willing to accept the added definition of trade or vocational school. So this particular use at this site is really to add this use, no changes to the site, no changes to the interior of the building at this point in time. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. We have provided a bunch of information with regard to adequate parking on the site, proximity to the train station. And we are scheduled to go back to the zoning commission at some point in time to answer some of the questions that they had. But we're happy to answer any questions about this additional use. One thing I'd like to mention is that the state of Connecticut recently put out a workforce plan for the state. And they're very enthusiastic about this type of uses throughout the state. And we're fairly excited about the fact that we'll be able to provide this use in the, in the Norwalk area for people that might need this type of, of training.
So from my understanding of the material, Brian, or the only thing, the only text that's being changed is what you had involved, which is designed to give students the technical skills to prepare them for specific occupation. I didn't see any other changes unless somebody else saw something else. That was the only thing of all the stuff that we received here. That was the only thing highlighted in, in dark, darker.
So there's, there's two, there's two changes, Fran. One is adding a definition of a vocational school. And then the second is to add that use into the industrial.
I couldn't hear you after industrial, so I don't know if you cut out.
So, so the second part is to add the vocational school use to the industrial zone.
Anybody have any questions, comments on this application here?
This is Tamra. I have a, I have a concern. From what I'm seeing is that you are offering the vocational training within this building. But there is a history of for-profit companies who offer training, vocational training, but they don't deliver. And there's a history of predatory schools who make students to take high interest loans. And in return, they don't complete their training program or they don't get a degree. Are you taking any type of precautions to screen your less sees? So that these type of companies do not take advantage of our citizens?
Absolutely. I can tell you that many of the schools that have expressed interest in locating here are schools that are already well-established in the area or in the region. We also will be very careful, obviously, about looking at who applies for location here. And we're happy to make that information known as soon as those kinds of details are available. Right now, we've had in the past year or so, as you know, this application has some, some history to it. We had approximately 12 or 13 different schools expressed interest. Those are all schools. We obviously don't have agreements with them at the moment because we don't have an approval. But we're certainly willing to make that information public as soon as we are able to get those agreements in place. But we're certainly understand your concern, very valid concern. There's no question about it. We also know that there's a tremendous need for this type of thing in the area to obviously train people, whether it's HVAC or welding or mechanics or nurses aides or whatever. So we're very anxious to make sure that this goes forward very, very credibly. In addition to that, we have a number of connections with the state of Connecticut with regard to potential discussions about the use of the property. So we want to make sure that the uses and who is there and what they're providing are very well-known to the public. So we completely understand your concern and will be very careful with regard to making sure that the people that locate there are reputable and do a good job for the public.
So are you gonna establish any screening procedures? And once they're there and you see that they are not working on behalf of the students, are you having any screening procedures so that they don't stay at that site? Is there something that you're doing on behalf of the Norwalk citizens to achieve vocational training and take out loans that at least they will get a job once this is finished?
You know, that's, that's a, that's a tricky question. I'm perfectly willing to say that I will work closely with our attorneys and the owner with regard to what your concerns were, your stated concerns were. You need to, to just to understand one part of it is that if someone decides to go here, locate here or participate in a school somewhere else and this particular section is located here, it's hard to say that we can be responsible for every single thing that they do. But we'll certainly provide information and guidance to them as to how they can locate here in accordance with whatever requirements that their school has or that the state thinks is appropriate. So I can tell you that we're, we're very carefully, carefully with our attorneys to make sure that the best interest of the students, the citizens of Norwalk and the region are taken care of carefully.
Or any other questions, comments from anybody?
Fran, I have some questions for Mr. Peck. It's Tammy. Hi, Mr. Peck. Thanks for being here. Thank you. I had some of the similar questions that Tamara had. So we want to make sure that whoever you select, if this does go through, is fully accredited, accredited, accredited. Sorry, how do you say that word? Then, how many jobs do you anticipate if you put in a technical college? How many professors do you think would be in the building at sort of your average time? And then how many students would be there on your average day or week?
What we did is part of the traffic and parking report actually was estimate what the maximum would be. There could possibly be, and this would be, could be different schools at different times. It wouldn't necessarily be all one particular college. But there might be small sections that dealt with, say, something like a nursing program. And there might be another section that dealt with auto mechanics. So there could be a two or three or four different types of uses there at the same time. But what we did as part of the traffic and parking study was estimate the maximum number of people, professors, students, staff, and so on, would be 300 people. And that's the maximum. So we're very aware of the fact that we need to be cognizant of how many people we can fit in the building and what the adequate ability is to serve not only the parking, but the, but the neighborhood as well. We know that there's a certain credit for transit in the area, close to the station, it's close to the bus line and so on. But the maximum number of people based upon our traffic and parking report is 300. Let me just split that up a little bit more and say, there are potentially three different areas or times rather of the day that students might be there. They might come in for a morning class, for example. And that might be from eight o'clock to nine or 10 or whatever. So eight o'clock to say noon time would be one period of time. Noon to three or four might be another period of time. And then an evening class would probably be no later than eight o'clock at night. So take that 300 people and divide that up. And there could be three different time periods where people are located there. So I know that's not an exact answer to your question, but that's the maximum number of people that we would envision being there in that maximum of 150,000 square feet in the building.
Okay, and a couple of questions kind of about the building physically. Right now, the way that tax record presents this property, it's 69 individual condominiums that each have their own taxable ID. Would you be eliminating all of those and those 69 parcels and making it one?
Again, I don't want to speak too much for our attorneys, but my discussions with the owner of the building goes something like this. There are a number of different institutions which have expressed interest in coming here. And some of them might need 2,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet. So it turns out that there may be some interior renovations in the building from time to time that would set up partition walls or set up specific areas for individual schools. I don't know how that's gonna compare with the existing condos that are set up right now. But I can certainly tell you that one of our attorneys is very close to that particular issue. And if a school came in and said, okay, we need 10,000 square feet. And if it turned out that, that caused the documents with regard to the condos to be either reorganized or redrawn or in any way reorganized, we would certainly do that. So I don't know if that is gonna affect the number of condos. There are certainly some portions of the building, because we're not talking, we're only talking about 58% of the building here. There are some portions of the building that have remained just as they are right now. And I assume that those condos would stay just as they are structured right now. Whether it's a one small office or whether it's a larger office with open space or whether it's a storage space or whatever. So those would stay just the way they are now. But I would, I would defer, you know, that specific question about reorganizing the condos to our attorneys and either tonight or a later date.
Hey, Tammy, was that, was that, was that data provided to us when you just read a lot about 68 condos?
No, I just looked it up myself.
Yeah, I know. So we have to be careful with what we, you know, that we deal with what we've been presented, right? That's the, that's out there is the package that we have. So we have to be careful on looking things up ourselves and bringing it into the conversation so that we disclose. Hey, you look this up. It's not part of.
I looked up the information through the city tax record and through the multiple listing that I have access to. It was just helping me understand the building a little bit better.
Thank you.
Okay, and sorry, just two more questions. They kind of have to do with if you change this or, you know, make 58% of the building a school or multiple different institutions. Is there some type of common space, you know, like Norwalk Community College has the big common area? There's literally no outdoor space there. Are people gonna be hanging out on the sidewalk for a while? That building had a lot of unsavory activity. And I'm just thinking about kind of street safety. I like the idea if it's active with people. I think that's a great idea because Van Zandt Street is, has some better parts and some not so better parts. So what do you foresee as, how will it change the character of, of what's going on either in the building or out on the sidewalk and the parking in the back?
Yeah, I think that most of the activity would certainly be within the building. There's no question about it. The building currently has some area for daycare, for example. People that work in the building take advantage of that so that they can, in some cases, provide daycare for their youngsters when they're, they're there working. There's another section of the building which is cafeteria. So there may be other rooms that are set aside as open space or sort of community gathering spaces inside the building that could be set aside depending upon the, the schools that expressed interest and proceed with actually moving forward with agreements with the owner. I think that's a great idea. And I think as, as that's, that awareness becomes more and more unknown that the use of those common spaces will become more and more sort of activated. I do agree and I understand completely that there's probably not a lot of space outside. Certainly along Van Zandt, it's very narrow and there's a sidewalk there. I would have to say that someone may go out the front door to smoke a cigarette or whatever. But you know, that's probably something that we don't really have any control over, certainly public space. But we would expect certainly that there will be places inside the building that will, people will be able to gather, whether it's for having a sandwich or getting a cup of coffee or whether they're dropping their kids off, that'll be able to be used for the students there. So I think that's a great question and certainly something the owner will definitely want to work on as these institutions continue to express interest in moving here.
Okay, thank you.
So anybody else for any questions or comments?
Just one question. These units, are you leasing them or are you selling them as, as condo units?
They'll, they'll be.
Your lease to the.
They'll be leased to individual institutions. They can, they can enter into an agreement, different durations that will be up to the institution and the owner and our attorneys to work that out. They won't be sold as condos, I don't believe. They'll be, they'll be leased.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
Just looking, just looking forward to this happen, I guess. Looking forward to the, the change of the building. Vocational use is good. You know, I don't know which industries or trades, but I hope that it's, it's a cluster of them that we can see the immediate benefit in our town. So I'm just looking forward to seeing more of development on this part for that building. And the surrounding buildings, hopefully it could be supportive businesses for these vocational outlets.
I'd like to just support that. Fran is totally in line with the Eastern Norwalk Top Development Program and for the East Norwalk Village Program. So I support the application wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when we first went through this, we were, most of us, all of us were in favor of bringing that in. And it's needed, you know, we saw it as a need, fill a need. So, Mike, I saw your hand up. Go ahead. Mike Mysak.
Well, I did look something up too, so I'm gonna have full disclosure here. It was not related exactly to this. But there was a study done by SWRPA when they existed, you know, five years ago. And I don't know the name of the study, but they basically, I think, determined that we were about 200,000 short of contractors and service people in Fairfield County, which is why it's so hard to get someone to return a phone call when you have a leaky pipe or a leaky roof or any number of trades, painting, et cetera. Electricians, all of these things. And of course, home care is highly understaffed. I found that out recently with my own father who passed recently, but we couldn't find someone to come in so that he could age in place at home. So all of these service industries are lacking in the, in this area. And so I see this as a plus for our area and it allows people to raise their income level and raise their ability to feed their families and enter the middle class without the traditional path of going to college, which has been overrated as most people agree now in terms of, you know, being the only path to higher income. So I, I, that's why I'm supporting the education of tradespeople and locations in Norwalk.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'm gonna put forth the, the resolution here to approve. Ryan Baker, you gave me a, a resolution that says be resolved that the zoning commission.
Steve wrote this.
Steve wrote this? Okay. So I'm putting forth the resolution by the planning commission to approve this as it stands. Do I have a second? Ryan Baxendale, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? We're forward to the zoning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to the approval of minutes. I have some questions. Have I, you guys, you guys finally think to edit? Any comments on the minutes?
This is Tamra. I do. I have a comment on the minutes.
Is it the word console?
I'm sorry?
Is it the word console, one of them on page one?
No, no. This is, this is my statement when we were debating the moratorium.
What page are you on?
I'm, I'm trying to bring it up now before the kind of.
I think, well, I had a note, I think it was yours on.
Oh, here it is. I am on page, oh, doesn't have a page number here, page five.
Yeah.
And my question, well, my comment is, the, the, the statement says Ms. Shockley thought that they had the authority to put a moratorium on two industries. That is not what I said. And I want to refer. Do you have it?
I have, I had it underlined myself. So just tell us what you want. I had it underlined myself. Go ahead.
Okay. I went back and I listened to the, 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 the video. And it said two hours and three minutes. And I said, how does a municipality impose upon an industry that you cannot do business in this city until we determine that you can? So my statement was actually the exact opposite of what's here in the, in the notes, in the minutes.
Okay, so, right. So this is a, one thing to keep in mind, the minutes are not verbatim. So how would you like this? How would you like a change?
Oh, uh, let me see. Ms. Shockley, I didn't think, but I said that they, that questioned how a municipality imposed upon an industry can impose upon an industry that you cannot do business in this city until the city determines that you can. So basically, I'm quoting the exact statement I made during the hearing, but it was exactly opposite of what is stated in the notes, in the minutes.
So I lost everybody for a minute. You want to send?
I just.
It's opposite what you said. That's why I had it underlined.
It's exactly opposite of what I said.
Right. So Diane, are you on there taking minutes or not? Ryan, you taking notes Diane?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. So. Did you want to, you're going to go back and listen or change it as we have it here?
Yes.
Yes, you will go back and change?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Okay with that, Tamara?
That's fine, as long as it's correctly reflecting what I said during the meeting. That's fine.
Okay. Anybody else have changes or edits? Tamara, I had on page one where it said that the list said she consoled you on the oil tank issue at your house. That was a.
Actually, she did, but I didn't know that. I didn't know that got to the minutes. I thought that was off the record, but he did.
Yeah.
During the meeting, it wasn't off the record.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't pay attention to it, but yeah, that, that was said during the meeting.
Okay.
I have one. I have one. We're talking about the July 14th meeting, right?
Yeah.
At the end, page six of six at the bottom, the last paragraph, Diana, it says, Mr. Ferguson noted that, that there may be a special form of the help first-time home buyers would be happy to work with Ms. Shockley on that. It was pretty much, there's first-time home buyer programs. That's what I mentioned, first-time home buyer programs. And I was willing to share that with, with Ms. Shockley or anyone else.
Well, Steve, how would you like that to read?
Yeah, I would like for it that Mr. Ferguson noted that there may, there, there are first-time home buyer programs and would be happy to share them with Ms. Shockley or anyone else. Thanks, Diana.
Okay, the one here I have is bottom of page three. It says, very bottom, last two sentences, it says, attorney blank reminded them that the only application before the planning commission was not before them at this meeting. So we're definitely missing something out of that sentence. It doesn't make sense.
I'll go back and listen. Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to send this to, I mean, I don't know if we need to see the minutes again, right? I mean, I don't know what this last sentence was. So Brian, we're going to, you're going to reissue them for the next.
That's what, when Diana makes her edits, she'll send them to me and I'll send back out to you guys for your next meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, so what's next? Comments of director, that's you, Brian.
The only thing that I was reminded to remind you is the joint planning and zoning commission meeting coming up on August 31st. So just make sure you have that marked on your schedules. And that's it.
Okay, you, but what are you going to send out? It's going to be a package for that? I don't remember exactly right now.
Yeah, I'm sure Steve will have something for you guys to review.
Yeah, so you're going to give it to us the way you usually give it to us or the way zoning commission gets it?
We've been doing everything via email, so probably do it the same way. Are you, are you talking about Zoom invites?
I mean, the last time I, whatever meeting I was on with zoning, zoning seemed to have, we've told that we don't want the paper stuff, but they seem to have a whole presentation with those dividers in between, whatever, however you guys put it together. But anyway, whatever you're going to send us for that joint meeting will come the usual, usual way, I'm assuming.
Yep.
Anything else on, from you, Brian?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, I have a few things, but we'll go first with the comments of commissioners. Anybody have any other topics or whatever? Go ahead, Mike.
I want to just thank everyone for the brevity of this meeting because there's a concert at Calf Pester Beach at seven o'clock. And I may make it, even though I don't really love Billy Joel music. It's not bad, but just reminds me of the radio when I was growing up. But anyways, Billy Joel music at Calf Pester at seven, seven to nine thirty, they said. So I think we're going to make it.
We're almost done. That's why you're wearing your lobster shirt, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, just a couple of things here for Brian Baker. Confusion, I looked up the agenda online, right? And what I'm expecting is, or this, this is where residents will take a look. And there were the attachments that we received were not there. Now, I, I saw, I didn't have a chance to read, or you said that you guys haven't, hasn't been attached. Anyway, my, my expectation is that whatever we have is attached to the agenda online, because we're always getting, you know, people complain that things don't get put up online on time or whatever. So is that a wrong assumption or is that the norm, right?
No, that's fair. I didn't post the E24 on my, usually those are kind of small potato applications, but I think going forward, it's a good idea for us to post them. So I'll, I'll do that going forward.
Yeah, I, I would say put everything there that we're seeing so there are no questions from, you know, from anybody. Whoever wants to access it, it's there. Okay?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, and the planned merger of planning and zoning. I did go, I, I looked at it on YouTube, but they had, the, the public hearing was held by the ordinance committee. Three people, two people spoke. It was Diana LaRicella and Rich Bonafon against it. And then there was a letter from Roy questioning the legality of it. I don't, I'm not sure there was any, something about statute that Steve was going to look into. So the public hearing happened on July 20th. And I think it's going, unless Brian Baker, you know better than, it's going to go to the, to the common council. I'm not sure exactly what date effective would be January from what Top Livingston will say will be January 11th. So January 2022 will be effective. What's there right now is that the joint commission would be nine regular members and three alternates. I have no insight or anything on how that would come from the mayor, the new, you know, whoever gets named, whatever the new planning and zoning commission would be. I have no, I've had no conversations. I have no insights, nothing on what, how it will be made up with what we're, when. So that's all I know right now and sharing it with you. Okay, and that's it. Our next meeting is September 8th. Well, our next, our joint one is August 31st. And our regular meeting is September 8th. Anything else for the orders, they used to say? All right, see now, do I, may I make a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Fran, I think you shouldn't use your fan next time. I think that was all the feedback.
Well, it's hot in there, so she has it on for a reason. It's hot.
I know. Maybe blow it at your feet.
Blow it on her feet?
Yeah.
The fan was blowing, blowing across your microphone. It's just like, you know, talking on the phone when it's windy.
All right, well, you guys could have told me I would have turned it around. So don't be shy. You never are.
I wanted you to be cool and collected, though. I mean, so it was a trade-off.
Hey, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of the summer. Enjoy the concert, okay? And be well. Ciao.
See you later. All right, Brian, Mike, Brian, tomorrow, Fran.